I ordered the common council meeting for the city of Milton on Tuesday, February 18th, 2014 at 7:00 PM. I'll ask for confirmation of the appropriate meeting notice.
The agenda was posted at the Shaw Municipal Building, Dave's Ace Hardware, Milton Pigly Wigley, and the amended agenda was made directly available to the media.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to welcome all citizens and address any questions or concerns that are not on tonight's agenda. Seeing none, we will move on to item three. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to see if I date part of you on the agenda?
Yes, that is not on the agenda this evening.
Um, have you posted it on the agenda? Is there a reason it's not on?
If you'd like to first come to the podium and then you can give your name and address.
Hello, my name is Tom Lang. And I'm just wondering why it's not on the agenda?
Jerry, can you speak to that?
You bet. After the mayor declared the property a public nuisance, you have 30 days in which to respond to that and to come into compliance with our code of ordinances. So, the reason that this is not on the agenda is that there's no action, there's no authority that the council could take to do anything with that at this particular point in time. So, the mayor has the statutory authority to set items on the agenda. Members of the council can request items to be on the agenda. None of that has happened, so in large part because the 30 days for which you have to remedy and abate the public nuisance has not yet expired. And so, after that point, after those 30 days are gone, and depending on, you know, what the status of the public nuisance is at that point in time, if then that Mayor Frazier deems it appropriate to put it on an agenda for further council discussion, that would be his discretion to do so.
We had an oral appointment with the mayor and a gentleman who came up from Louisiana which is here now for that meeting. And there was no official cancellation of that meeting.
You canceled it, sir. You called me and canceled that meeting. And you can certainly, if you'd like, reach back out to us to reschedule, but tonight, this is not on the agenda, so we can't have that discussion.
You can try that.
Thank you very much. Agenda item three is approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four is old business, discussion and possible action on the selection of Attorney Dale Thorpe to represent the city of Milton in matters pertaining to the potential Evermore Development project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As requested by the council in their input, as we are evaluating the feasibility, and I will say, we're directed to evaluate the proposed Evermore Development. We were doing so absent any legal counsel. We had an attorney that was tentatively selected by which an identified perceptual conflict of interest was identified, not a legal conflict of interest. And nonetheless, it was the direction of the mayor and the council to seek an alternate referral for an attorney. Attorney Dale Thorpe is from the firm Thorpe &amp; Christensen. He's with us here tonight. He can give you a little bit of his background, but he was one of the four attorneys that Attorney Schrader did recommend. He came highly recommended based on his experience with annexations. And I guess before we get too far into that, I do also want to publicly state what has been an email conversation that I told you would be my recommendation, and it really is also primarily the recommendation of our mayor, and that is in the absence of a petition for annexation, or in the absence of a direct request from the towns or the developer himself, I am recommending, and I know the mayor is recommending, that no further staff time be spent on the Evermore Development Project. In the event that one of those things happens, I think it is sound advice for the city to be appropriately represented by an attorney. And for those reasons, I would encourage you to approve the selection of Attorney Dale Thorpe to represent us should either one of those two things happen, either a direct petition for annexation and/or a specific request for action from the city of Milton as it pertains to this project.
Good evening. Thank you for having me today. I'm Dale Thorpe from Thorpe &amp; Christian. I've talked with your city administrator a couple of times. I quickly went through my background. I know your current city attorney from past dealings, and I'm available to answer any questions that I have.
Questions from the council?
I have practiced municipal law for 25 years. I'm to the point in my career where I can say there's hardly anything that can come up that I've not run across on occasion, sometimes more than once. I've worked on a number of annexations, primarily from the municipal side, but on occasion from a developer's side as well. I'm familiar with the legal challenges that can be brought, the methods that can be used to defend against these things, to fight them, to the issues that are likely to come up, and dealt with those successfully.
Are you aware of the project that is being talked about, in all?
My staff pulled together every newspaper article we could find, which is actually a pretty good resource. We read everything there. Your city administrator forwarded a number of files to me that we read as well. There's still some mystery to it from my point of view, maybe from your point of view as well. I'm not sure exactly what it all looks like. I've seen some renderings, but generally, I'm aware of what's being talked about.
When he was here, he talked about breaking ground in spring. And you're working with annexations. Is that even a feasibility, a possibility?
If someone were to ask me, how long does an annexation take? I would say that if it was uncontested and it was unanimous consent and it was an easily understood project, I'd say the best case is 90 days, best case. If there's any sort of complexity to it, issues that need to be resolved, negotiations that need to take place, zoning issues to be resolved, that the process can be quite lengthy. Although as a practical matter, once a petition is filed, certain statutory deadlines for taking action do kick in. It can be extended by mutual agreement, but not indefinitely. So, the process could take quite a long time. Conemaugh, some of the neighboring communities have been through this process, and it can go on for years. But once filed, it moves along pretty quickly.
There's no contest of interest. You have no other...
No. When I heard that there had been a conflict, we double-checked our conflict. We have a computerized conflict check system. I think I've met Mr. Helgeson at some point in the last 15 years, but we've done no work that would represent any form of conflict of interest whatsoever.
Any additional questions?
Without any proposal to annex or petition, how can we have a question?
You know, it's not unusual. I was telling your city administrator earlier today, it's not unusual for a developer with a project of this scale to attempt to engage in zoning-type negotiations. The council would understandably want to know what they're getting if your vote in support of an annexation petition is signed. So, talking about what you're going to get or what's going to happen, so it's not a mystery, it's an understandable conversation to take place, sometimes well in advance of an annexation petition being filed. Zoning and annexation can go track long simultaneously. But it's my understanding that very little in terms of comprehensive zoning or use has been discussed with you at this point?
Questions? Okay.
I'll make a motion to select Attorney Dale Thorpe to represent the city of Milton in matters pertaining to Evermore Development.
That's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good to see you. Item five is new business, discussion and possible action on providing recommendation to update and improve the city of Milton's strategic plan.
Thank you, Mayor. This was an issue that we wanted to have on the agenda, more so because of all of the different opportunities and some of the challenges that are presenting us as we go into the next five years for the city. The city's strategic plan was solidified and adopted in 2008 when we adopted our comprehensive plan. There was an update to it in 2011 as we were updating our city facilities. That was a strategic objective that you are in the process of meeting. But the other thing that the staff and I realized when we put together the budget is that strategic plan is very, very complex, it's comprehensive, there's been some staff changes. And from my perspective, I would like it to eventually be that the strategic plan is well-known by not only our council members, but all of our department heads, and more importantly, our city as a whole. And I think that we could do some pretty unique things if we engage the public in that strategic planning process, and that we kept it to the four core principles that I talk about in that memo, and in particular, you know, service-oriented solutions, fiscal integrity, and really, you know, what takes Milton forward so that those decisions that are made in this room every other Tuesday night can be directly tied to that strategic plan. And so, I don't know what kind of a format that you would like to use to have that, to have those discussions. I think from my perspective, there would be value to starting them before the election and then bringing on whoever the council is in April up to speed and up to that point, because I think that's a process that needs to start, you know, sooner than later, in particular with the variety of proposed developments like the Evermore Development Project. But even beyond that, whether that happens or doesn't happen, with all of the things that we've done and all of the opportunities that we have before us, whether they be Parkview Drive, the fire department, the library, all those things, each and every decision that is made in this room has an impact on the other decisions and when they can be made. And so, you know, planning and timing those decisions and tying them to, you know, budgets and taxing and all of those things are, it's going to be important that a well-thought-out, well-presented strategic plan that meets the expectations of those we serve and meets your expectations, I think is going to be an important document for us to put together in the next six months. So, the conversation piece is, how would you like to go about doing that? We could do that in the format of having some, you know, start out with kind of some listening sessions an hour before council meetings. We could do a, like a four-hour block on a weeknight. I've known some groups that have taken, like, retreats, you know, where they go for two days and they just kind of hammer it all out.
You're going to lock us in a room?
I'm not going to lock in any room. I think there's laws against that. There are groups that do that. I know of school boards that take like retreats. I know of councils that take, you know, do like a retreat sort of a thing. So, I guess my question for you is, how would you like to go about doing that?
I think the listening sessions have great value as far as laying something like this out.
I think they do, too. I think that we have to identify what the purpose and intent of any listening session is, so people understand what the focus is. So, maybe if we could have something in the courier, something like, you know, what is strategic planning, you know, what are some ways that it takes place, you know, just some sort of general public information on it, so when they come to a listening session, they understand exactly what the purpose is.
I would like it the night of council meetings, because that doesn't tie up another night, which for some of us is difficult to find enough nights.
And I wouldn't be opposed to looking into what the cost of an independent, objective consultant that specializes in municipal strategic planning, what that would look like if we could, I mean, maybe it would be cost prohibitive, but it's at least an area that we should look into.
What, when the library was being talked about, they had boards in the library where you could, just as a citizen wandering through, put down what you had in your vision. Can we do something that is not time-specific, like a write-on board that would be available?
And they had consultants help them with that?
Correct.
So, I mean, I agree, that would be something that would engage the public to have something on the website.
Not everybody has the website, and the library's a very popular place. I was trying to combine media.
Something at the gathering place.
Cool.
I think it's, I've just gone through this process, or I'm going through the process in my other job, and I think sometimes the starting point is the difficult place to start, and I think this body has to recognize that all of you have exponentially greater and deeper knowledge than, you know, folks might have. And so, perhaps the conversation is best started here. Identify some goals, some objectives, some measures that you would like to see, and then engage the public on that, so you're jumping off of a firm plateau as opposed to, you know, a blank sheet of paper, just as a suggestion. But I do think the four, you know, kind of core values that Jerry's laid out are very good, and I think indicative of what we do, and those are service excellence, civic engagement, sustainability, and fiscal integrity. Certainly, that's a good spot to start. There's a wide array of issues facing us, and I think many of them fit into those areas, most of them.
And with respect to the format, what we could potentially do is have the listening sessions, you know, four of them, each one of them focus on those four areas. And so, you know, each one, say, okay, the first one is service excellence. What are some of the measurables, some of the things you've started, example being the reorganization of the Public Works Department? And some things that I've seen from other cities and other colleagues are that, you know, where people can more rapidly report issues in the community. One example that I saw was, you know, somebody taking a picture of a pothole in the street with a smartphone, sending that to, you know, it's routed to a, you know, kind of a databank, and then it goes to the Public Works Department, and this is where this is. And then within 48 hours, they respond to how they're going to do that. So, if there's been one good thing about this utility pipe kind of crisis thing is that we have really gotten a lot more citizen engagement. We've had people that have signed up for the e-notify system, you know, when can I stop running the water? And they've signed up for the Code Red, you know, the emergency call-ins and things. But it's also alerted us to how we need to do so much more and get out the word in so many different venues. Some people are reading about it in the courier, some people are getting it through the phone call. I think Howie told me, he said, you need to be more direct and let them know it's more of an emergency. They thought you were trying to sell something on the phone call.
Yeah.
Sounded like a telemarketer, so.
Or the scam that's going around.
Yeah, exactly. So, well, if I'm interpreting the conversation correctly, you'd like to start with listening How about the first one being at the March 18th meeting and with the objective being input on service excellence? And that gives us enough time to get community notifications out to people, send letters, get a little bit of help from the local media about saying, you know, two to three blasts in the courier, a couple on the blog, a couple on Facebook. And we can start that this week, you know, do three or four of them, and then after we go through those listening sessions over a period of two or three months, then we can work with the format. We'll have information related to consultants and what those costs would be and things like that. Recommended staff action is to authorize administrator to work on a format of putting together the way that we would develop the new strategic plan.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the amended agenda, item B, discussion and possible action directing staff to work and authorize the release of requests for proposals on a new "Welcome to the City of Milton" sign.
Thank you, Mayor. This is in your hard copy memo as we worked with not only the city's ad hoc sign committee, but also just multiple drivings of the new bypass. Revisiting a subject from the fall of 2013 is looking for locations where we would place a new "Welcome to Milton" sign. As has been discussed at meetings before, we did get a $10,000 grant from the Milton Fund for a new "Welcome to Milton" sign, and the challenge has been for us has been finding the best possible place for that sign. And so, if you look on page two of the memo of the map, the first three X's along the Highway 26 bypass are where you see identified possible site locations. We did get some help from a gentleman by the name of Mr. Tony Hickey. He's on the Chambers Ad Hoc Sign Committee, and so he's got obviously some expertise about sign placement. And those first three were among the areas where he felt would be, from a traffic perspective, get the highest levels of visibility and essentially the greatest return on investment for placement of a "Welcome to Milton" sign. In no particular order, we'll just go through first with the Crossridge Park location, that being the first X. The site strengths that were identified there were the fact that it's city-owned property so that there's no land acquisition cost. It is right, literally right, as you're coming into town headed north. The challenges with that are that the speeds of the vehicles, it's what's known as a left-hand read, and so as you're kind of coming in, you do not see that really until you're right on top of it, coming up from underneath that townline bridge. And also, with it being a left-hand read, those are generally considered a little bit less desirable. So, the duration of which time that people would see that sign would be somewhat limited in nature. The second location is the one that we've talked about seemingly quite a bit, and that is the Art Donaldson property. That is the preferred site from the Chambers Ad Hoc Sign Committee. That's also unfortunately the one that we don't own, so there would be land acquisition costs associated with that endeavor. The property is owned by a gentleman by the name of Mr. Art Donaldson. It's a 1.5-acre kind of remnant piece of property that is literally right off the Highway 26 bypass. And if you'll see as you're driving into that, if you can imagine coming in where that townline road is on your map, you see that you're literally like driving right into the sign before the road veers off to the right or to the east toward Exit 8. So, you capture it at Exit 6, and then again, as you're headed toward Exit 8, you know, you're probably actually looking at that location for anywhere from, if you're traveling the speed limit, approximately two to four seconds of actually staring right at that particular location. Its elevation is advantageous because you could build right into the hillside, so the site development would potentially be less than at the other two sites that are being evaluated. One downside, obviously, is that there is land acquisition costs associated with that site. As early as this week, or I should say, as late as this week, a third party has, a private party has expressed interest again in possibly partnering with the city on that land acquisition. So, that's a conversation that presuming you find value in that site and would want to have that conversation again, we could bring it up at a future meeting and discuss negotiation strategies potentially, if that is a site that you would like to see explored further. And last but not least, the other site that is being discussed is right along on Exit 8 on Highway 59 and Highway 26. There's some city properties there. The challenge to that particular site is that as it exists on the interchange, there would have to be substantial site development to that in terms of its elevation. And then also, by the time that somebody actually sees that sign, they're already on the ramp, or they've driven by Exit 8. So, it's got some visibility challenges there as well. Optimally, we'd like, you know, not only this welcome sign, but all welcome signs to be in locations where right as you're coming into the city's limits. We don't want it to be so that, I'll give you an example, you know, the Crossroads Business Park sign now, because of the annexations that we've done, you're now, you know, kind of, you're well into the city before you actually see that. So, it's a conversation that depending on money and feasibility and your wishes, there may be value extending that welcome sign out to the city limits, rather than having it be that you're already a half a mile or three-quarters of a mile into the city before you see a "Welcome to Milton's" Crossroads Business Park. So, from my perspective and the conversations I've had with the mayor, I think it's very important that we continue to look at these sites and that at the same time, we also start, you know, putting out a request for proposals for some sign professionals to help guide us with where to place these, because the investment into a large monument sign could range anywhere on the low end from $25,000 to the high end if you use a digital message board in excess of $50,000. So, there's a considerable investment into this new sign and its placement, location. It's one of many big decisions that you'll make.
And why is the possible Lamar sign on the far side of the railroad tracks?
Oh, and I'm sorry. That particular sign is an issue that we have to relocate the easement when we built at the Dean Clinic building. Lamar had a perpetual easement at that site, and so because they have property rights associated with that easement, the council authorized and approved a relocation within 12 months of that sign at an alternate place in the city. Lamar is currently evaluating the feasibility of that location for their relocation. So, that's not a "Welcome to Milton" sign, that's a potential billboard request for them.
It's a billboard, I'm sorry.
Yes, yep.
That has nothing to do with Milton. I couldn't wrap my mind around why that would work.
Yep, no, that doesn't. And they're hoping to catch northbound and southbound traffic with that. Obviously, they lost advertising revenue with the bypass, and so that sign that they had became less valuable, and now they're looking for an alternate location in the city for that, for their billboard.
And Mark, can you confirm that the terms of the original perpetual easement would apply then to this new location, correct? Specifically, that there would be no compensation?
Or what?
Relocating the Lamar sign, just since it's come up?
The Lamar sign? I'll need to take a look again at whatever the agreement was with Lamar and see what situation it was under that time.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Do you have our feelings on this? Yeah, I have one other thing that the folks at Lamar offered to do.
At this point, they're...
Right, and I think that, I don't know how you would feel about this or how we might be able to get a better gauge, because it's very hard to take a look at a map, and I'll give you the example of when they actually built the bypass itself. It wasn't until all those elevations came into play that you really got a good, full understanding of just how structurally different the city looked in terms of its roadways and, you know, and the transportation systems and all those things that go around when the project actually got completed. Mr. Hickey offered to bring what they call like mock signs, so a very, very large scale what a "Welcome to Milton" sign would look like in the form of cardboard or vinyl, and then we could photograph that at all three sites, and you could see what that would look like. And we could actually drive it so that we would know which of the three sites might look the best. It's kind of hard to do with seven people at the same time. So, we could take pictures of that for you and show you what that looks like, and so you would kind of get a gauge of, here's what it might look like at the Crossridge site, here's what it would look like at the Donaldson site, and then here's what it would look like at the third site.
Because this is a flat map and the elevations are quite pronounced now.
Yes.
That would at least sound reasonable, because, you know, that's flat, and I know that it's not...
Right.
You couldn't put them up for like an afternoon, so we all could maybe drive by.
Up a few hours so that we could drive by?
I can ask them.
I mean, if we would know the date, we could all take our time and drive by it. I think that'd do better in a picture, because then we could actually see it.
We probably only got one that they moved.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Right, it's not that you...
Well, maybe you could put one up, yeah, three different days and let us drive by it and take a look at it.
Well, if it's a canvas printout, maybe you can take three.
I just don't think it'd capture looking at a picture as well.
Well, is there any that you think you could absolutely eliminate right now that you don't, you just don't like at all?
I like the Donaldson one, to be honest.
I think so, too. I mean, I feel, even though we have to pay for it, if that's the best sign, that one stands out the best, I think we owe it to our businesses.
It's more than four seconds, too, that that's in your face. Oh, yeah.
Maybe we don't even have, you know, I mean, I would propose the Donaldson site, if that's the best site where people get the longest...
The Crossridge site is also good. The one just off Exit 8 is, I mean, it's a welcome, it's a welcome sign, it's not a directional sign. You're already here, here's where you're at, you are here.
Too late, we're trying now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you're right, you kind of lose it fast when you're coming.
Is there something in the Donaldson site that could be put on there, other, to go along with their sign? I mean, like a cell tower, or that would be illegal, or, I mean, something we could get revenue back on or something?
That's good thinking.
Yeah, it is good thinking, and there's a couple of different things we can do with that site analysis. And so, as not to compromise the city's negotiation position, if you'd like to see this on the March 3rd agenda, we'll put it there on closed session so you could evaluate those, and it's more so just because I don't want to compromise the city's negotiation position if we said something and said, you could do this, this, and this, and then Mr. Donaldson, obviously knowing that we're interested in his property from conversations that we've had before, it could potentially change his asking price, so.
March 4th, please.
Or March 4th, thank you. Yeah, that Tuesday.
So, we can do that. Put it on the agenda. Okay. No action tonight, then. Onto item six, which is general items, our next meeting. Our next meeting is Tuesday, March 4, as previously mentioned. Mayor and alderperson's reports. Any alderperson's reports?
Yes, we don't have a report, but I have a, the mayor and Jerry and I have talked about getting a council on aging. No comment from you. Started a program, and I would like to see staff go ahead and get something going on that to find out the framework and, and possible goals of what they might do and know the feeling of the rest of the council.
Let's have staff put together some thoughts on alderperson's strigil suggestion of a council on aging, and we can put that on the next agenda as well, I imagine. Okay, any other alderperson's reports?
Okay, I have two little things. One thing I've talked with, I think one or two of you about it. I'd like to see about starting a mayor for, for a day and maybe even a council for, for a day. Essay contest for elementary school kids. It's done in a lot of communities, and I think it's real important as we start to develop this brand of community and that being our deliverable, that we really start to engage those very young citizens and get their ideas as the Parks Commission has done on the playground design, and really get a sense of, you know, what do kids like about Milton and what would they change if they were sitting in our chairs.
Would like this fit in with, is it Northside or Middle School that has an election?
The middle school does.
Would that have some way of tying in?
Could potentially. What I'd like to do is, is maybe with staff pull together some ideas of how to do it, how other places are doing it. Obviously, if every kid in the district does it, that's an awful lot of essays to read. So I did have a conversation with James of the Courier, asking if they would be interested in partnering with us on something like that, but, so we'll put some ideas together and bring them back at the next meeting if that's okay. And then the other item is the Traffic Commission that I alluded to last Thursday. That is going to happen. That will be, is it February 24?
Correct.
February 24.
Two o'clock.
Uh, two o'clock. And that will be specifically to address areas of traffic congestion here in the city of Milton, specifically and kind of caused by the, the issues at Madison and John Paul and Madison and Northside, which have been issues, as Howie said, for 40 years. It's time to see if we can figure out some better way. And so we've asked folks from the school district, from Rightway Bus, from the State DOT, from the Police Department, I can't remember if there's anyone else.
Superintendent Shiger will be up.
Superintendent will be there, and, and the goal will be to leave that, that meeting, maybe not with a plan, but certainly with some really good ideas on things we're going to look into with the goal of solving this, you know, yet this year. Perhaps the solution might not be implemented, but it'll at least be identified. This is the year we fix that. So we will report back to everyone. If anyone is interested in, in coming to that meeting, certainly you're welcome on the council. That's all I have. Staff reports. City administrator?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor, nothing.
Don't make me ask again. Director of Public Works.
Always speechless.
Let's see if you have more time.
Keep running water. We had two, we had to fix this last weekend. We actually had to dig all the way to the main to get them on thaw for the services. The frost is about five and a half feet deep in some places or four feet. One place it was actually below the water main, so people should keep running their water services until probably at least the middle of March, probably later.
What?
City's giving a discount on the water, but most of the places that have the problems are if you don't use a lot of water, or if you're on a dead end where there's not a lot of water running through the main, or if there's some, some of the older subdivisions, the mains are higher up, they're not buried as deep. So people should try to keep running water in one faucet someplace, you know. Like I said, just because it got warmer out, this isn't really gonna thaw anything out until the frost will probably be in the ground until some places, you know, the middle of April yet, so. So just keep running water, and like I said, you'll, you'll get a discount type of water bill for it, so.
And is it right that we're investing in some additional equipment to?
We're buying a thawing machine so that, so if we do get some more services, it probably won't be here for a couple of weeks yet, but, but that'll allow us to thaw the frozen water service without having to use electricity. It's a, it's a recirculating water temperature one that'll work better, so.
Knocked out someone's power the other day using the, another way.
Power surge.
Power surge, the next door neighbor.
That's one of the problems with thawing out with a welder, you can get a power surge.
So it's, it's a good solution, but it's not the only.
It's not the best.
Yeah. Traditionally, we don't have public comment at this point.
I was just gonna make a comment that some people, residents, are just wondering kind of where the worst areas are, you know.
Well, you alluded to that a little bit.
It's kind of, it's, it's most of, I guess, the smaller families that don't use a lot of water, or if you're, if you're gone for a weekend and the water's not running or something where it just sits and, and doesn't, doesn't run. It's kind of hard to pick a area in the city because we've actually had Hilltop Drive, Chicago Street, and Hickel Drive, that's been all different areas, but the pattern has been low water usage for those, for those houses, so. So it's the ones that don't have a lot of water running, sure that it freezes up.
Okay, anything else? Public Works, all right. Police Department?
As part of our ongoing accreditation process for the Police Department, we're having a mock exercise. The Wisconsin Law Enforcement Accrediting Group will be sending some assessors out to us on the 27th of March, at which time they'll stay for the day, go through all our policies and various operations at the Police Department, and that gives us a dry run to see where we're at for the actual accreditation, which happens in October of this year. So we have three assessors lined up at this point. All we have to do is buy them lunch for the day and that's it, so. This will give us our dry run to figure out where we're at and what we might have to fix before October.
As you all know, that is very exciting stuff. That's a process we've been working on for some time now. It's been a goal for even longer, and a lot of hard work, a lot of proofs and all that that goes into it, but excellent to know that that's on track for, for this year. Library, joint fire, city clerk.
All right, I'm gonna miss your jury spot on this one.
Well, that's not fair.
I'm sorry, not intentionally. The Commitment to Community Recognition Dinner is this Thursday, starts at 6 o'clock at the gathering place. Limited tickets are available because I've already given the number, but I could smudge it by one or two if anyone didn't RSVP yet. The recording, listening, the listening session from last week was recorded. That DVD is on YouTube and it is linked from our website. If anyone would like to watch that, you certainly can. I did take notes of that. I jotted down the people that did speak and their, their general feelings on it. So again, if somebody wants to see those notes, requests can be email or written letter, and I could provide those also. Final, as Howie mentioned about running the water, a couple of recommendations I was given to people, they're leery of just wasting water. I recommend that if you run your kitchen faucet, you can put a pitcher or milk jug under it to fill the water. If it overflows, at least it'll go down your drain and won't flood your kitchen, but then you can save that water, water your plants next year, you can use it for cooking, you can stick it in the refrigerator, so it's not totally a waste. That'd kind of give you an idea of too of the amount of water that you are running through your system, so. People are a little leery. You don't have to waste it.
City treasurer, is this your last meeting?
Yes, it is.
Ah.
I just wanted to let you know the auditors will be here on Monday, and we should have the financial statements. They're, they're pretty much done. The trial balance has been already sent to them, but I'm working on the fixed assets right now, so that'll be done. And so hopefully they'll have all of their field work done next week and that'll be out, out of order. It'll be checked off. I'm hoping to get the presentation of the final budget done next week, so that'll be on the website. Right now, it's the draft. There was only a couple changes that were made at the time that the budget was passed. And then I just want to say that I really enjoyed working at the city of Milton. I really had a good time here, so I wanted to let you know that.
Thank you very much for all your hard work and some very intense budget meetings and holding us all in line, but we want to do more and more and more and telling us to, to hang on a minute. But we appreciate all your efforts and we'll certainly miss you. Okeydoke.
Okay, consideration of a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to statute section 19.85, per need, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Reference to Crosswood Business Park land purchase and Crossroads Business Park land sale in 19.85, per need, considering, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility. Reference recommendation for interim treasurer appointment.
That's a motion?
Second.
That's a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.